I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Sacramento County Planning Commission on June 14th, 2021. Can we start with the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Tom.
Here.
Martenson.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Shelby.
Here.
And as we know, Commissioner Titi, she's absent and you do have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start with the opening statement.
Yes, in compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is live streaming closed in-person public participation. Different procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, speakers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Feel free to send your email comments to boardclerk@saccounty.net and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
Thank you. Let me start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we call the first item on the agenda?
Yes, item number one is for a general plan amendment. It's countywide and the environmental documentation is doc is a negative declaration.
Thank you. Are you ready, Kelly Mieda?
We are ready.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kate Rose. I'm an associate planner with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review and I'm presenting this evening's item to you, the 2021 Housing Element Update. Also with me are other members of the Housing Element Team, including LeAnn Moffett, our planning director, LeAnn Mueller, one of our senior planners, and Susan Beazey, who's a peer with us from Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Next slide. The request before you this evening is a general plan amendment to amend the housing element of the county's general plan to replace the 2013 housing element with the six-cycle 2021 through 2029 housing element. Next slide. The housing element is the county's plan for meeting its fair share of the regional housing need and it's will cover a planning period of eight years from 2021 through 2029. It's one of the required elements of the general plan, but it is notably the only element that must be certified by the state. In this case, it's the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or State HCD. During this evening's presentation, I'll focus on three key chapters of the housing element, which include the land inventory, the assessment of fair housing, and the Housing Action Plan Chapter. Next slide, please. The final hearing body for this item is the Board of Supervisors. Staff presented the draft Housing Action Plan Chapter to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors at workshops in July of 2020 and October of 2020. Staff also presented draft programs to all 14 community planning advisory councils in the fall of 2020. And staff also conducted two rounds of public outreach. The first round occurred during the summer of 2020 and the second round occurred during October of 2020. Next slide, please. The housing element includes a new chapter, which is Chapter 11. It's called the Assessment of Fair Housing and that's included to comply with AB 686, which was signed into law in 2018. The housing element will discontinue many implementation programs and add several new programs, as well as amending programs and carrying forward other programs from the previous housing element. Staff conducted two rounds of review with the with State HCD. And the first round resulted in a formal comment letter from them and the second resulted in county staff and HCD staff. During both rounds, we made revisions to the housing element based on their comments. We also made the draft housing element available to members of the public for a public review period in February of 2021. All of the comment letters that we received during that public review period, as well as HCD's review periods, are available as attachments in the material. Next slide, please. So as I said earlier, the housing element is the county's plan for meeting its fair share of the regional housing need. And this process starts at the state level with HCD, calculating the overall future housing need for each region of the state. The Regional Council of Governments must then work with State HCD to develop a methodology to distribute that overall regional housing need among all of the cities and the counties within their region. In our case, the regional agency is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SACOG. Now, due to the unmet need for housing, the state and regional housing projections are substantially higher than in prior periods. This table shows the county's total unit allocation of 21,272, broken down by income category. The county must plan to accommodate 7,158 units of lower income level, 4,186 units for moderate income, and 9,928 units for above moderate income levels. The staff report contains additional information on how these numbers compare to our previous allocation and to the SACOG. Next slide. State Housing Element Law requires cities and counties to provide a parcel-specific inventory of appropriately zoned and available sites for the provision of housing at each of these income levels. This table summarizes the results of the inventory that we conducted and it shows the RINA, the projected supply of units, including accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and the oversupply or shortfall for each income category. As you can tell from the table, the county has sufficient residential capacity to accommodate its RINA for moderate and above moderate income levels. However, the county only has enough appropriately zoned sites to accommodate 4,324 lower-income units compared to a RINA of 7,158. Therefore, there is a current shortfall of 2,834 units. In order to make up for this shortfall, we will be required to rezone sufficient sites equivalent to the unmet RINA obligation. This will be completed through Program A1. It's the countywide rezon program and I'll cover that a little bit later during this presentation. Next slide, please. So the Assessment of Fair Housing.
Actually, I have a question on that last slide.
Oh, sure.
Is a part of the law that we need to meet the not have an undersupply for each of these categories? Does that require to not have?
Correct. We have to show that we have we have appropriately zoned and available land for each of these income categories. And meaning that the onus isn't on the county to like develop affordable housing or develop market rate housing. The onus is just to make sure that we have enough appropriately zoned sites to accommodate these. AB 686 requires that all public agencies administer programs related to housing in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing choice. It also requires that local governments include an assessment of fair housing choice within their housing elements. As a part of this chapter, we examine existing conditions and demographic patterns, including concentrated areas of poverty and areas of opportunity, to compare how past discriminatory housing practices, such as mortgage redlining, racially restricted covenants, and urban renewal programs that targeted communities of color inhibit fair housing practices in the county today. The majority of the data used in this assessment is from the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, prepared for the Sacramento Valley Region in February of 2020. As a part of this chapter, we analyzed our sites inventory against many maps and data sources to determine how our placement of sites would impact access to opportunity, patterns of segregation, and disproportionate housing needs. In preparing this chapter, we found that many of the same areas, which are considered low resource or high segregation and poverty, are also areas where high percentages of residences are non-white, where much of the population is considered low or moderate income, and where there is a high displacement risk. These areas also generally align with the environmental justice communities of North Highlands, South Sacramento, West Arden Arcade, and North Vineyard. The chapter finds that by identifying sites for lower-income RINA in these areas, the county's sites inventory may contribute to existing patterns of segregation and inequity. The chapter also identifies several programs to reduce this impact and will cover some of those later on in this presentation. I'm about to show you quite a few of the maps that we included in the chapter just to give you a taste of the analysis. And the pink dots on the map represent our lower-income inventory and the dark purple represent our above-moderate income inventory. As I show you the maps, pay attention to where the pink dots are. Next slide. So this slide shows the sites inventory overlaid an opportunity map created by HCD. The map uses economic, educational, and environmental indicators to determine high-resource areas, which are shown here as dark blue, versus low-resource areas shown as light green. Quite a few of our pink dots, or again, our lower-income inventory sites, are in low-resource areas of the county. Next slide. This slide shows the distribution of the sites inventory over racial demographic maps. The bright orange color shows that the area is more than a non-white, while the bright yellow color shows that the area is only 20% non-white. Next slide, please. And again, here's that sites inventory overlaying the percentage of the population that is low or moderate income. In dark brown areas, more than 75% of the population is low or moderate income and in the light brown areas, it's less than 25% of the population. Next slide, please. This slide shows the inventory over a map of communities sensitive to displacement using data from the UC Berkeley Urban Displacement Project, which determines displacement risk based on the amount of rent-burdened households and other factors. In this map, areas which are considered sensitive to displacement are shown as purple. Next slide, please. The Housing Action Plan Chapter of the element is organized by seven goal areas, including providing an adequate supply of land for housing, reducing constraints to housing, preserving existing housing, improving housing opportunities for special needs groups, providing and maintaining affordability, promoting efficient use of energy in residences, and promoting and affirmatively furthering fair housing opportunities for Sacramento County residents. Next slide, please. Each of the goal areas in the Housing Action Plan Chapter will be implemented by several implementation programs and we'll go over a key a few key programs over the next several slides. Next slide, please. Program A1, the countywide rezon program, is one of our priority programs and it's required to accommodate the remaining lower-income RINA of 2,834 units. As a part of the program, the county is committing to identifying and rezoning 164 acres to allow multifamily uses by right. This amount includes a 15% buffer to accommodate state requirements for no net loss. A lot of the language here are specific government code sections that are required to comply with state housing law. But I'd also like to draw your attention to the last bullet point, which commits the county to identifying at least 10% of the remaining lower-income RINA in high and moderate resource areas to meet our goals to affirmatively further fair housing choice. The target date for this program is May 2024, but we've already started work to try to identify some sites. Next slide, please. Through Program B8, the county will consider amendments to the zoning code to allow for more missing middle housing product types in a broader range of zoning districts, including single-family zoning districts, and amendments to development standards to accommodate these housing products. Missing middle housing refers to house-scale building with multiple units, such as duplexes, triplexes, courtyard apartments, and townhouses. Missing middle housing is also referred to as naturally occurring affordable housing because these products tend to be denser and more affordable. This program will also help us meet our affirmatively furthering fair housing goals because it will result in more opportunity for lower-income residents in higher resource areas of the county and a lot of single-family zoning districts of the county. We received positive feedback on this program from the development community, housing advocates, and members of our public workshops, or sorry, members of the public who attended our workshops. Next slide, please. Program E3, it covers amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And the Planning Commission actually gave us feedback on this program in 2020, which has been incorporated into the language that you see here today. There's three components to this program. An evaluation of the current affordable housing ordinance to determine if it's building at the rate that we anticipated when it was adopted. An economic feasibility study to guide our decision to strengthen the inclusionary housing component. And then also the underbuilder exemption. We'll be looking at that through this program to consider amendments to that exemption. The target date is December 2023. It is a priority after housing element adoption. Some workshop attendees are interested in a quicker start date. Next slide, please. Program G5, through this program, the county will study just cause eviction ordinances or other programs to help keep precariously housed tenants in their homes and present these findings and recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So through this program, we'll study different tenant beyond what's already required by state law to support outbreak council by December 2024. I'm getting a little feedback. Is it possible that somebody's mic isn't muted? Sorry about that. Attendees of the workshops requested that the county consider moving that December 2024 start date up because of the immediate impact of the coronavirus pandemic on renters and the fact that statewide eviction protections are set to expire June 30th of 2021. Next slide, please. Following today's meeting, we'll be taking the draft housing element to the Board of Supervisors for adoption on July 27th, 2021. We are expecting certification from HCD following board adoption. However, there is a possibility that HCD will request additional changes to the draft element. If this happens and those changes aren't minor corrections, but substantial, we'll bring the revised housing element back to this body and to the board for adoption. Let's see. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendations are based on these findings that the adoption of the housing element will meet requirement, that the housing element address the preservation, improvement, and development of housing, that the housing element is consistent with other elements of the general plan, and that the countywide rezon program will accommodate the county's remaining lower-income RINA. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending that the board approve the amendment to the general plan to update and replace the 2013 housing element. The recommendations to the board are that they adopt the housing element and that they determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete and adopt the negative declaration. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation, but the Housing Element Team are all available to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff?
This is Cara. I'm happy to start. I guess I'll start first with the tenant protections and a question about timing. As you mentioned, the current statewide provisions are set to expire. I'm not sure if they're being contemplated, being extended or not. But considering the process that we'll have to go through to adopt the housing element, that doesn't seem to match up. I'm wondering if there's an ability to take something outside of the housing element to do maybe an emergency ordinance to potentially either mimic the states or accelerate what we're proposing through the housing element. And sorry, before you answer, I just want to, I should have started with this, but congratulate you on this presentation tonight because I know how much work goes into this and you guys have all done a fantastic job on what you've presented tonight and also the outreach. So I'm sorry, I didn't start with that, but just wondering what the the process would be for some type of accelerated tenant protections, potentially outside of the housing element?
Thank you, Cara. Yes, I think I can start and then perhaps other members of the team can jump in if they have more to add. I am not aware of, my understanding is that so far, the legislature has not opted to extend these protections. They still have a little bit of time, I guess, if they wanted to do something very quickly. In terms of our timing for implementing these other programs, we do have a, we have prioritized especially several other programs that we went over tonight, which include the countywide rezon program. And we also have prioritized work on the Affordable Housing Ordinance Amendment and work that we're doing on the Housing Trust Fund, which is kind of the non-residential companion to the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which sets a fee on non-residential projects. So those are some of the programs that we have to get started on right after housing element adoption or that we have already started on because the clock is already ticking on them. And I know in particular with the rezon program, that will likely be a condition of HCD's certification of our housing. And we know that that one has and that one has some statutory deadlines to it as well. So I think our response in the past has been we will work on tenant protections as soon as we have staffing and available resources to take it on. But I think those other programs that I mentioned are taking some are taking priority. But I'll pause here in case LeAnn Moffett or LeAnn Mueller would like to add something.
So yeah, this is LeAnn Moffett, planning director. Kate nailed the answer. It's just that we have had to prioritize the things that are absolutely statutorily required and where we expect HCD to comment. And it's just a matter of how much capacity planning has. You know, there's other things going on, including the Climate Action Plan and other stuff. So it's just a matter of what our capacity is. Obviously, you know, the board could choose to reprioritize those. They had already initiated the Housing Trust Fund at some point in time in the past, in the recent past, so.
Okay, yeah, and I I get that as, you know, part of the prioritization of requirements associated. And maybe this is something the board is contemplating. I'm just really concerned. I know there's, I mean, they just actually passed a state budget bill today and there's significant funding for individuals in the form of stimulus checks. But if we have folks in housing now currently, you know, we want to be able, obviously, to keep them there over, you know, this last period with the COVID impacting everybody's life and, you know, ability in some instances to be able to afford their housing. So I'm I am really concerned about that and I just, I guess I see it as a two-pronged approach, maybe through the your normal process and general tenant protections. But maybe it's something I'd like to, you know, give direction and question if the board is considering any type of emergency, if if the state does indeed the emergency protections do indeed expire in the end of June, if they're contemplating anything as a stopgap measure, just so we don't put additional pressure on the actual housing element itself and and folks being displaced and then having to have potentially more inventory necessary. That's a difficult one.
I think it would be fine if the Planning Commission wants to highlight, you know, if you want to make some comments to the board that you view this as a high-priority program and it would be your preference if they could figure out a way to to also prioritize that, right? I mean, you can still move the housing element forward while also offering comments. And I I think we're all going to be watching closely the work that the board and the county and their consultant, Deloitte, is doing with regard to funding from the American Rescue Plan. And I I wouldn't be surprised if through that public process, this sort of topic also gets highlighted in the context of that additional available funding, which, you know, could be beyond what's in planning's normal routine.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking. And then a question kind of on the the next steps process. I mean, I I feel strongly that the proposals you have in here will help move the needle and and be successful. They're, I think, you know, taking it to the next level. My concern is the implementation phase and really the to to make some of these proposals and programs successful, it does require, you know, a tremendous amount of outreach to the community, which you've already done on the development of this program. But when it becomes talking about a specific project in a community, specifically, I think, some of these by right proposals in the more high-resource area involving the neighborhood associations and the local CPACs to really, you know, describe what this process means so that more entertaining proposals at the commission and the board level, folks have already been part of that process, feel like they've had some input because by right, obviously, takes away some of that that process that they're used to. And so I guess it's more of like a PR campaign or an educational outreach campaign post-adoption by the board. I'm wondering if you guys have been thinking about that and what your plans are for implementation.
So I do know that we have, this is LeAnn again, some LeAnn Moffett. We are currently working on a number of implementation efforts, including some funded with SB2 funds, where we have our zoning administration staff out in front of the CPACs right now, starting on some of that streamlining work. There are different grant funds and different, different sort of tranches of effort. So we are out in front of the CPACs on a narrow package of items. And Kate, maybe you want to weigh in about some of the other programs in there for outreach. Noting the rezon program, we have done one rezon program before. I was involved in that. It takes a substantial amount of effort, including with the community because obviously, these zoning sites, people really pay attention. So, you know, going looping back to our answer on your last question is we know how much work it takes to do a rezon program and it absolutely does take outreach and that's just, you know, one component of outreach. So Kate and LeAnn, do you have other ideas you want to weigh in on in terms of the whole outreach, ongoing outreach? I guess the other thing I would say is unlike in the distant past on housing elements, you know, we tended to do a housing element and then we put it on the shelf and planning, long-range planning moved on to other items. But with all the state requirements for reporting, et cetera, we have at least gotten to the point where we do have a bit more dedicated staff, you know, for the ensuing implementation and have realized how important it is to retain that staff and not take them off on other projects. Or LeAnn, yeah.
Go ahead, Kate.
Sure. Sorry, LeAnn. I'll I'll jump in and you can add to it if I miss something. I just wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission is aware of Program B5. It's the Affordable Housing Education Program. It's kind of the county's, our outreach strategy to educate like inherent bodies about affordable housing and also emergency housing and services for people experiencing homelessness. The plan through that program is to conduct outreach to our CPACs and also to the property and business improvement districts or the PBIDs and other groups around affordable housing. And I think we have a And I think we have a start date of developing that strategy by June of 2022. Is that what you were thinking of adding, LeAnn?
That actually was what I was thinking of adding. And then I would say that the other thing is that as we have gone out to the CPACs and had, and done presentations or had specific meetings with various groups, we have made note if they expressed an interest, like a specific interest in one of our programs, like as Kate was saying, in the missing middle, we have had a lot of interest from both the developers and the advocates as to helping us develop what that is going to look like. So it's something where we have indicated that we know we're going to have to do a lot of outreach and we already have some groups in mind that we're going to have to be working with on that one. And then I think also some of our other programs, like Universal Design, we know that we have a lot of interest from both developers and advocates. So we know that as we go through and work on that program, that's going to require a lot of outreach and presenting with people. So as we've done our outreach, we've kind of flagged, at least for ourselves internally, what programs we know are, have generated interest and are going to require us to do some very specific outreach and follow-up as we move along with implementing those programs.
That's fantastic. Sound great. Sounds like you guys are already definitely thinking and doing a lot of these things. I guess my only follow-up comment would be a direction to the board to, and potentially there's a possibility through recovery funds they're receiving from the federal government to continue to provide adequate resources to you all so you can continue that work because that, I really do feel, is the key to success and really necessary for all this work to come to fruition. So that sounds great. That's all from me for now.
Do you have any other questions for staff?
This is Justin. I have a few.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I'll start off just on the big, the big program, the countywide rezon program, A1. The second bullet point talks about permit owner occupied and rental multifamily uses by right, in which at least 20% of units are affordable to lower income households. But I think these are already by right on multifamily parcels. So which parcels are we talking about in the second bullet point?
You're exactly right that on multifamily zoning districts in the county, affordable multifamily uses are already allowed by right. This is only included because of language that HCD wanted us to require. So the requirement from the state HCD that we included this bullet, we pointed out to them that our zoning districts already allow for these types of uses. It's just language that they wanted to see in the program. LeAnn Mueller, am I explaining?
You are, you are explaining that correct. And I would even go a little bit further and also some of our commercial sites do allow multifamily by right as well. So again, this is part of some things we did have to, even though we do them in some of our programs, we had to specifically call them out to make HCD comfortable and to make sure that they fully understood. So, yeah, it does seem a little redundant, but that was to add to HCD's comfort with our program.
Okay, I would clarify, they're just a suggestion, and I would clarify that that's only pertaining to multifamily or commercial sites, because right now it seems vague enough to apply to single-family sites. Would you agree that it seems vague enough to apply to single-family sites right now?
I think that we can take another look at this language. I think, I haven't read it that way, but it's good to hear your comment.
Okay, we can leave it at that. You know, before it goes to the board, that's just my suggestion is to clean that up if that makes sense, that we don't need to spend a lot of time on it.
Yeah, I mean, we'll look at that, but I think the way we look at it is for rental multifamily uses, when we're thinking about, I think in our minds, we have that what we might add is like five or more units. So usually that doesn't get you into a single-family type situation, which is why I don't think Kate and I were reading it that way, but we'll just double-check it since you obviously read it differently than I think we have been reading it. So thank you for the comment.
And this is LeAnn Moffett. So just to also clarify, you probably have read that some other jurisdictions are really trying to allow certain kinds of small multifamily by right and single-family zones. We do have a related program, but it isn't our intent to allow that everywhere. And so that wasn't, was not what we meant by the sentence. So I think we do need to sort of look at it again and make sure we're not misimplying something we don't intend to do.
Thank you so much. My next question is also on the countywide rezon program. A rezon program is a heck of a lot of work and especially taking a lot of these parcels from 20 units to 30 units. What do we do when a landowner that can right now develop, you know, they have a minimum density calculation on their parcel already? What happens when they say no? And do we have any idea how many are going to say no?
Yeah, so this is LeAnn Moffett. We have been through this before. The county did over 205 acres in a rezon program some number of years ago. It was certainly challenging. It took us a while. We were able to get to the point where none of the parcels we rezoned, and in that case, for the most part, we were going predominantly from single-family to multifamily. We were able to get to the point where property owners, if they weren't favorable, were at least neutral. And you are using the power of the board to rezon, you know, which is in the board's legislative approval, but obviously the board doesn't really like to be rezoning people who are adamantly opposed and standing there in front of them in opposition. So, you know, it's really staff's job to try to come up with a pool of sites so that hopefully we can find locations where we don't have owner opposition. I think it's in our mind where the apartment sites that are already 20 are probably the easiest ones to, you know, to move because they're already an apartment, that typically under our current housing incentive program can probably pretty easily get into the mid-20s. And so, you know, those are the obviously obvious ones to go for rather than trying to look for things that are single-family or otherwise, not apartments already to rezon. But, you know, the board has to approve it. At the end of the day, they'll all come through the Planning Commission. They're, you know, we'll go through the CPAC. It'll, it'll be a public process and people will get to weigh in.
Okay, thanks for that. And I, yeah, I'm definitely in opposition to any forcible rezon that is not at a landowner's discretion. I think especially with our, the Land Use Policy 5 with the minimum density, you're really taking away some of their rights on their land. And I'm definitely opposed to that. So just in combination with the minimum density land policy, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. One thing, just a question, do we look at maybe doing overlays on corridors in order to get up there so we're not forcibly rezoning anyone, but we're giving them the option to step up to 30 units?
Yeah, so the county has already allowed multifamily by right in a lot of our commercial zones. So we could do an overlay, but we already are sort of there, right? We already have some amount of commercial sites in our inventory. So, you know, we'd need to look at, an overlay could be an option. We need to look at how much that realistically is going to bring to the table. And again, you know, what we probably need to look at as staff that we're aware of is just coming in with a large pool of options to begin with and then watch that be whittled down. It puts the local jurisdiction in a terrible position because without a certified housing element, you know, we're really in a pickle. We can't apply for grant funding. That's absolutely essential. So again, our goal is to come up with a pool enough, a big enough pool of sites that hopefully when we come through the hearing process in front of the Planning Commission and in front of the board, you know, they've got options.
Yeah, I get that. And I guess let me weigh in now then. So I'd be definitely preferential to using the overlay because then they wouldn't, you wouldn't be taking away their rights and they may be, the landowners may be more amenable to it because they wouldn't then be subject to the minimum density calculation that goes along with the rezon. I think, if I understand how these things are played together.
No, I think the issue is that in, when it's different, if we already had an overlay in place, the minimum density would be different. Under state law, when we're faced with having to do a rezon program, state law absolutely requires us to have a minimum density. So the overlay approach only works if that's in place before you have to do a rezon program. It's too late for that, I think, is the answer.
Well, I guess, I guess we'd have another crack at it in four years if we didn't certify the program, or we'd have another crack at it in eight years, but it's.
Right, if we don't get it.
I guess that's the pointy.
Yeah, if we don't have a certified housing element, though, we're restricted from doing a lot of things, including applying for grant funds. So I don't really think that that would be a viable option to the board.
Okay, well, I guess take my comments for the next time we do a housing element. I didn't get involved with this one until later and I apologize for that. But that seems like a solution that we should definitely look at in the future is doing some large areas which allow for higher density in the areas we want it. But that's, that's all my comments on A1. But this kind of ties in on B7, the multifamily density on business professional. Do we have an idea of what that could, what that could give us as far as units?
LeAnn Mueller, can we?
Yeah, I think what we're looking at is probably around 15 dwelling units per acre and I think one point, I think there's probably about 20 or so acres out there that seems viable. So if you're looking, so I mean, it's not a ton of units. I mean, and we're always looking at things in a more conservative fashion, but I mean, we're probably looking, I would say, at opening ourselves up by doing that at a conservative, like maybe 300 or so units, which, you know, isn't a ton, but is always good when you're looking for, to expand your housing product and to give people as much flexibility as possible.
So that would be zero affordable units then if we made that change? Is that correct?
Correct. They would be in more in the moderate type, more in the moderate type, which would go towards the missing middle.
Okay.
When you're looking at that, you're looking at them.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like we're, I know we're following state law, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense, which probably explains some of the lack of housing in the state, right? Is we're, we're just pushing everything toward high-density housing and zoning and that's why units are not being built, because we're just, they're unachievable densities in the areas that we're putting down. So what we're doing is we're really hollowing out that missing middle further. You know, when you take an RD20 site that could develop at RD15 and now it's RD30 and has to be developed at 22 and a half, we're really getting rid of those naturally affordable homes. That's, you know, I guess that's my, my challenge with what we're doing here is we seem to be kind of appeasing the state on one hand, but not really focused on how do we create that, that missing middle? Because the best way to do that is to have densities that make sense for the missing middle.
Right, and I think that, to your point, that's why we have the program because we, and I think that's why there's so much interest to it, because I think a lot of people do want to develop with that. And I think we would like to see more of that product as well, especially in the county, because it seems like that's a product that the developers are interested in. So I think that's why we have, why we specifically early on identified as a product, as a program that we definitely wanted to pursue.
Okay, my last question, I think I've said my piece on that. I think A1 is very counterproductive to establishing a missing middle, our largest, biggest program. The rezon is very counterproductive to that. I get it, our hand is forced by the state. The B10 is kind of my last language clarification. I mean, it talks about will adopt instead of will study or may adopt. And I guess I was just curious on that language on the B10.
Could you, I don't have the full element.
Yeah, it says in order to facilitate development of affordable housing units, the county will adopt amendments to the existing Affordable Housing Fee, Deferral and Waiver Program. I don't think we can, we always predict with certainty what the Board of Supervisors will do, so.
Something, this is LeAnn Moffett. The board has actually already asked county engineering in the context of some recent board hearings to come back with program changes. So this is something that the board has actually already heard and directed staff to do. That's probably informing why we felt comfortable going with slightly stronger language. We were a little vague on what those amendments would be, but they've already sort of initiated that.
Okay. And then I guess the only other question I had is, have we thought about any sort of, what we're looking at is, you know, how do we, how do we spur housing development? Overall, have we looked at any sort of KPIs or ways to track the planning process itself? Any impact it has on development? Have we looked at sort of timelines for average building permit approval, timelines for planning approval? I don't see, and maybe I missed it in here, but is there any sort of implementation program that would move development along quicker other than kind of making it by right?
So some of that is being funded by the SB2 streamlining effort. So we are going through that process. I would also say just in general, the county has really been focused, particularly, for example, in the Vineyard Community, trying to prompt additional units, addressing some of the infrastructure costs down there. And we are seeing the results of that with a number of the large builders coming in, considering working on, you know, some of the bold and skip programs and other mechanisms to get units going in some of those areas. So that's sort of more on the financing side in the cost of building the units and cost of getting the infrastructure there. And then we do have some programs more about streamlining in here. Kate or LeAnn, do you want to address those?
Yeah, there's a couple of programs under Housing Element Goal 2 that have to do with reduction in permit, permit processing times. One of them is more about coordinating and meeting with developers, both market rate and affordable regularly to kind of evaluate approval timelines and receive feedback from them on our processes. And that's Program B1. But there's another one, Program B3, which specifically will result in expediting of projects that include affordable housing and also exploring the creation of a program to kind of subsidize pre-apps for those program, or sorry, for those projects which include affordable housing.
I think we also, to build on what Kate said, is we have Program A8, which we are looking at trying to facilitate affordable housing on some of the larger sites in the county, like maybe some of the larger ones that maybe haven't moved because they're just too large and the cost of potentially dividing them and such is excessive. So we have those. As far as maybe market rate, again, I think unfortunately it goes back to largely the missing middle program. And then we haven't fleshed it out yet, but I think one of the other things we have is the more of a tiny home program where maybe we can work with people. where maybe we can work with people to create some smaller homes that may be more affordable. So I don't think that's exactly what you're asking, but we do have a lot of programs that we, we've been trying to free up and get development moving in the county and maybe address the constraints.
Perfect. Yeah, I think B1 is probably the closest, but you're right, it doesn't exactly address my concerns. I'd love to see, you know, when we look at, hey, we were supposed to build this many units in all three categories in the previous housing element. We didn't do that for any, I'm not, I don't think for any of the categories, but definitely not the lower two. I know we've got a number of programs in there to try to address the lower income portion of it. But I think it would be great to start actually looking at some metrics, and maybe you guys do this internally, but publishing those metrics, right? And just giving you a little feedback, I'd love to see the results of B1, be involved with the process. Because I think, I think that could, has the potential to significantly reduce the cost of housing in Sacramento County. And hopefully have more people that are interested in building that missing middle and hopefully all, all phases of housing. Because we're in desperate need of all, all three levels of housing, it looks like, based on the, the RINA numbers, so. Those are all my questions for staff this evening. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, Matt, we have public comment for this item?
Yes, we do have one caller on the line. One moment, please.
Go ahead and start.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lori Vickerman with TCS Planning. Thank you for allowing us to provide comments regarding the housing elements this evening. We also provided written comment letter that should be in your packet. Our company provides land use planning and entitlement support on a variety of large-scale and infill residential projects throughout Sacramento County. It is our request that Planning Commission redirect county staff to engage with HCD and representatives like us from the housing community to push for a more practical and appropriate approach to RINA compliance. Number one, we feel the county's approach to meeting the RINA obligation needs to focus on attainable number of units over the next several years. As proposed, density is being stacked on top of existing multifamily designated lands in order to create phantom compliance. Communities that we build in, like Carmichael and Rancho Marietta, are zoned 20, 30, and 40 units to the acre. High densities have not been constructed in these sites during this time because higher densities are not economically feasible and compatible with the nature of these communities. Number two, related to multifamily housing, there needs to be flexibility built into the methodology. With the county's current approach, if units need to be reallocated, the burden is put on landowners like ourselves and developers to find alternative sites to shift those units. And this is very burdensome. Number three, there's a lot of emphasis on achieving RINA numbers through high-density housing. It's important to mention that construction costs in high-density housing is significantly higher than low-density. The county's approach to assist in delivering affordable housing units for lower-income tiers, which is needed to alleviate the critical issue of the missing middle for all housing residents of Sacramento County. Those are our brief main points, kind of where we could see this going. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
And that concludes our public comments.
Thank you.
For this item, shall we, okay, shall we close the queue or?
Yes, we'll close the public comment and entertain the motion.
This is Cara. I'm happy to move staff recommendation. And then note for the record, some of the comments that have been made by commissioners tonight for the board. And I don't know if you need anything formal, but I think you've kind of understood and taken notes on several of the points that were made.
Yeah, I think we heard in particular the tenant protections. The question Commissioner Rathal had about the specific wording, and I forget which program it was. And then just general comments also about market rate housing and permit timelining, timelines. And middle, yeah.
This is Justin. I think the only, the only thing I would add is, is to look at, you know, when we're doing this rezone program, to look at overlay districts and not forcibly requiring landowners to upzone their properties.
Got it, okay.
Specifically concerning land use policy number five and a minimum density.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Martenson to move staff recommendations.
I can second.
Thank you, Chairperson Shelby, and I'll call roll Commissioners Hall.
Oh, yes.
Martenson.
Yes.
Rathal.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tatiishi, and the motion passes. And if you'll give me just one moment, there is a participant who has been unidentified in the, in the meeting. And I believe it just might be the owner or applicant for our second item. There is a participant with the last four digits of 3248. Can you please identify yourself?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Rajaram. Raj Kumar.
Raj Kumar, okay, thank you so much. Shall I call item number two?
Yes.
Okay, item number two is for a community plan amendment, rezone zoning ordinance amendment, tentative subdivision map, a special development permit and design review, located approximately 200 feet east of Stockton Boulevard, near the southeast corner of Stockton Boulevard and Elsie Avenue in the South Sacramento community. And the environmental document is mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you and good evening. This is Meredith Holsworth. I'm the project manager for the RAR subdivision project, and I will be giving you a presentation of the project this evening. Next slide, please. As Lydia mentioned, the project site is located approximately 200 feet east of Stockton Boulevard and south of Elsie Avenue in the South Sacramento community. The project site is made up of three parcels. One that is zone shopping center and two that are zone RD5 that are within the Victoria Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area. Their request is for a community plan amendment and rezone from the shopping center in RD5 zoning to RD7 zoning across the entire three parcels, which is a 4.3 acre project site. A zoning ordinance amendment to amend the Victoria Avenue NPA to remove two of the subject parcels from the NPA boundaries. A tentative subdivision map to create 30 residential lots in the RD7 zone. A special development permit to deviate from lot size width and yard setback requirements. And a design review to comply with countywide design guidelines. Next slide, please. This is the site plan. This is showing the proposed lot layout and the internal street pattern. There are sidewalks proposed throughout the project, and all exterior boundaries would have a solid wood fence or a nascentary wall. The subdivision will be gated with one main entryway allowing entry and exit onto Elsie Avenue, and then three access points for exit only. The requested special development permit includes deviations to the interior and corner lot sizes, the interior and corner lot widths, and then front, rear, and side street yard setbacks. Next slide. This is the landscape plan. This is showing the proposed new tree plantings, including buffering along the southern and eastern edges of the project. There's a landscape buffer along Elsie Avenue on the north, and then street trees on each of the individual residential lots. You can see a proposed park area on the south portion, which includes a playground, picnic tables, and a large lawn area. Next slide. The final decision body for this project will be the Board of Supervisors. The commercially zoned shopping center portion of the property is undeveloped, and the RD5 zone portion of the property is developed with single-family homes on each lot. And that would be demolished for this project. Historically, other uses, including an event center and an apartment complex, have been proposed on the, excuse me, the SZ zone portion of the property, though all of the applications have been withdrawn prior to making it to hearing. A mitigated neg deck was prepared to analyze environmental impacts in an MMRP is included. The applicant has revised this project multiple times in order to incorporate staff and stakeholder direction and to meet county and design, county design and development guidelines. Next slide. The Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed the project on January 9th in 2020 and recommended that the project be found in compliance with countywide design guidelines. This was their third time reviewing the project and had found it, had made a huge improvement from the first time that it was reviewed. And we're very grateful to the applicants for addressing their comments and concerns. The South Sacramento CPAC met on January 15th and recommended that the project be found in unanimous approval. And they are recommending approval with conditions. And this was the second time that the project had been reviewed by the CPAC. The first time, they gave many comments that they felt were addressed, but did not make an action the first time as they wanted to wait for the project to go through design review in case any big changes were to come about from the design. There was one member of the public that spoke in opposition at that CPAC meeting, but we have not to date received any written comments from members of the public. And staff is recommending approval with conditions that are included in attachment two. Next slide, please. The following recommended actions are before you this evening to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to determine the mitigated neg deck is adequate and complete under CEQA, to adopt the MMRP, to approve the community plan amendment and rezone, the zoning ordinance amendment, tentative subdivision map, and special development permit, and to find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, all subject to findings and conditions listed in attachment two of the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and we do have the applicant team on the line. And we have representative from our environmental review team for any CEQA-related questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have any questions for staff?
Sure, Shelby. This is Alan. I just had a couple of questions for Meredith. Yeah, Meredith, good evening. Question, the two exit-only gates, I see man gates there. Does it, it doesn't open onto a reciprocal access easement? Or is that somebody else's property?
Thanks for your question, Alan. I think I'm actually going to defer that one to the applicant, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine.
Hi, without saying anything, just Fred or Rastu applicant.
Wait a second, wait a second, and we'll give the applicant a chance to respond. Just give us one second.
And if we could get the applicant sworn in first, that would be.
Yeah, I'll have to swear in first, yep. So we'll wait a second for bringing the applicant on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, for staff? Okay, we'll bring the applicant forward. We'll swear the applicant in right now.
Okay, and Mr. Kumar, if you wish to address the commission, please prepare to be sworn. And we ask that you please raise your right hand. And the appropriate response is, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this commission is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Yes, I do.
And when you go to make your statement, if you please state your name for the record and the statement, I have been sworn.
Fred or Rastu, and I've been sworn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Richard Rosamovich with Area West Engineers. We're the civil engineers for the project. And the architect Fred or Rastu is on the line and also the property owner. And I believe Commissioner Hall asked about the, the question about the access. The property, along with the properties to the north and some of the properties to the west, all have a agreement for utilities and access. And they also have an agreement to maintain the facilities as far as landscape and road. I'm hoping that that answers your question.
Hi, Richard. This is Alan.
Hi, Alan.
I think I understand. So the question is, because you have two, I assume there are fire access that opens onto that, the backside of the existing shopping complex. So the question really is, and I think I'm hearing, is that that's a reciprocal drive access, right? So you're able to open man gates and all that onto somebody else's property?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, and this. Because, and the man gates will be normally locked or open. And before you answer that, the reason I ask is, on the backside of those commercial units, there's parking stalls there. And there's, it appears to be, you know, somewhat limited stalls, you know, street parking in the site. And if I were getting back to those, I, I might sneak in and, you know, park one of those stalls and walk through the man gate. I'm not sure, you know, that's intent, but the question is, are those man gates going to be locked? Or are they open all the time, or?
No, they'll be locked. They'll only be used for leaving the complex. The main entrance is off of Elsie, which is an in and out. So you are correct, Commissioner Hall. Those two additional are requirements for the fire department to make sure we've got the correct circulation for emergency access and address.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So we've read the staff report. And again, the architect Fred or Rastu and the owner are here. We concur with the recommended conditions of approvals. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. If not, we respectfully ask that you recommend approval of the project and forward it to the Board of Supervisors for their final approval. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
And I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I don't hear any questions. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Nope, no public comments on this item.
All right, we'll call the public comment section. We can entertain the motion.
This is Alan, asking the questions. I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We got a second from Commissioner Martenson.
Perfect. Commissioners Hall.
Yes.
And Martenson.
Yes.
Rathal.
Yes.
And Shelby.
Yes.
With Tatiishi absent, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And item number three is a planning director's report.
Well, I will get us started. I see Leanne Moffett still on the line. This is Chris Puhuli, Principal Planner. The only item that I was going to provide an update to the Planning Commission on is that we are going to have a board workshop tomorrow to talk about the Alberta specific. uh, to talk about the Elverda specific plan and the implementation challenges uh, that have, um, uh, been hampering, um, projects and their ability to move forward. Uh, so it should be a, um, uh, an interesting conversation with the board tomorrow. Uh, we're seeking, uh, uh, input and, and direction from the board, really around three issues. Uh, one is water supply, two is transportation development triggers, and the third is, um, some implementation challenges with ag res properties in the Elverda specific plan. So, uh, should have more to report at your next, uh, commission meeting about how that workshop, um, what the results of the workshop. And just to let you know, there are a handful of subdivision maps that are queuing up and, and are ready to be brought to the Planning Commission depending on the outcome of this, um, of this workshop. So, wanted to provide you with that input, or provided you with that update. Uh, Leanne, I'm not sure if you have anything further you wanted to.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then that concludes our, uh, our planning director update.
And moving to item number four is miscellaneous, uh, scheduling matters.
I don't have anything to report here, we do have items queuing up for the next few meetings. Um, so, um, uh, no miscellaneous items, but we do have meetings that we'll, uh, we're not looking to cancel any meetings.
All righty, and then for the last item, it's public comment, and there are no further public comments.
All right, the look, and so this meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.